I know you're doing a great job.
(laughing)
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Would you all join us as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll call?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
Present.
Good timing. Councilmember Engler.
Present.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Mayor McCoy.
Present.
No request for continuance. That will bring us to special presentation, and I'll move to the podium. Special presentation tonight is one of great joy for me. I had the distinct privilege this past week, on June 6th, the 75th anniversary of D-Day, to sit with a remarkable man, Len Zerlin, and I got to hear his story as one who survived D-Day and participated. And coming out of, or coming into your home, I had also the chance to see Dawn Meglothony from The Acorn, who has done an instrumental work and much needed to keep the memory alive of D-Day. And she has done a wonderful article in The Acorn. And of the three that are pictured, we have two of them here tonight. Harry, you're with us, and so is Len. And so I wanted to give a special presentation to these remarkable veterans. Leonard, if I could have you come on up here, if you would. Ladies and gentlemen, Leonard Zerlin.
Thank you.
Let me read this.
Wow.
What do you mean, "wow"? It's "wow", I get to stand with you. This is amazing.
No, please, don't do that to me.
Leonard, I'm gonna go off script. Leonard joined the Army Air Corps in three days. You enlisted three days after Pearl Harbor.
No, that's not true.
All right, correct me.
Five months later, my family, I went to take a course in aircraft engineering to make sure I'd get into the Air Corps. I couldn't get in as a pilot. I didn't have the college.
I know you're doing a great job.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Would you all join us as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll call?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
Present.
Good timing. Councilmember Engler.
Present.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Mayor McCoy.
Present. No request for continuance. That will bring us to special presentation, and I'll move to the podium. Special presentation tonight is one of great joy for me. I had the distinct privilege this past week, on June 6th, the 75th anniversary of D-Day, to sit with a remarkable man, Len Zerlin, and I got to hear his story as one who survived D-Day and participated. And coming out of, or coming into your home, I had also the chance to see Dawn Meglothony from The Acorn, who has done an instrumental work and much needed to keep the memory alive of D-Day. And she has done a wonderful article in The Acorn. And of the three that are pictured, we have two of them here tonight. Harry, you're with us, and so is Len. And so I wanted to give a special presentation to these remarkable veterans. Leonard, if I could have you come on up here, if you would. Ladies and gentlemen, Leonard Zerlin. Let me read this. Wow. What do you mean, wow? It's wow, I get to stand with you. This is amazing.
No, please, don't do that to me.
Leonard, I'm gonna go off script. Leonard joined the Army Air Corps in three days, you enlisted three days after Pearl Harbor.
No, that's not true.
All right, correct me.
Five months later, my fam-- I went to take a course in aircraft engineering to make sure I'd get into the Air Corps. I couldn't get in as a pilot. I didn't have the college. I just graduated high school just a few weeks ago from the period. So I convinced my family I'm gonna go whether you like.
I love it. What I do have in my presence is he was given a commendation for a Silver Star. And they had written it up, and I had read the writing on it, that you, the plane couldn't land because a bomb was stuck. And just like out of a movie, you crawl through the catwalk, take off your parachute, freezing temperatures, and you unloose that thing. You don't have to add to it, and if I got it wrong, you can correct it later. But I think that's cool. I want to give you a commendation from the city, but I also, we had the privilege to speak this week, and we got it on video, and I wanted to show the folks at home and all the folks present. So you ready to see the video for the first time?
I'm a little embarrassed by it.
Oh, stop. I'm the one with the face for radio. You look good. All right, let's take a look at it. Let's show it.
What do we see? We were awakened by the First Sergeant on June 6th. At 2:30, I take a look, and I see clegg lights all over the veterans. And you don't light up an airstrip. And then, when I went to the control tower and looked around, you wouldn't believe what I had seen. As far as the eye could see, Jeeps, trucks, tanks way back. And I said, we know something's going to happen.
Hi, folks. This is Rob McCoy, the Mayor of Thousand Oaks, for another T.O. Talks. Today's very special. Today is June 6th, 2019, which marks the 75th anniversary of D-Day. And that was where our men and women from both America and Britain set the European continent free. With me is Len Zerlin. He wasn't an occupier, he was a liberator. He's a survivor of D-Day, and he's here today to tell us that story. Len, what a privilege to be with you. We're in your own house, and you've got all these memorabilia, and this is a museum.
Yeah, I'm the museum.
How old were you on D-Day, on June 6th, 1944?
Well, I was born in '23, gone on '21, I guess.
Yeah, 21 years of age.
Yeah. I chose to go in because I was devastated to read about what's happening in Europe.
What happened at Pearl Harbor, too. You signed up right after Pearl Harbor.
No question about it. So I said, this confluence of, I'm angry all the time, why don't we do something? Well, when I enlisted early in the war, I felt, that's my job.
You were in a B-26 Marauder, is that correct?
Yes.
So it was a twin engine?
A twin engine, same engine as the P-47.
And just so everyone knows, you were a turret gunner.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you don't get a big survival rate on that. A crew of seven?
Well, you know what? I never look at numbers because I'm fearful of looking at numbers. This is what you're planning, this is the essence of what you're doing. I don't see anybody that said, yeah, man, we're gonna do it. I just think this is the job we're trained to do. I look for one, one day is a precious day for me. It always has been to this day.
So 2:30, they wake you up, then they give you the briefing, and you take off at 6:30?
Yes.
And you're crossing the Channel?
Yeah, it only takes, what, 12, 15 minutes. The most thrilling picture you can never imagine, I'll tell you why. As far as the eye could see over the Channel, you see as the whole Channel with boats, right? Thousands and thousands.
You were witnessing history. What did that feel like? You were just doing your job?
You know, it just like going to work.
Okay. Your heart had to have been beating.
No, I'll tell you something. In retrospect, everything gains with more focus.
Okay.
While you go to work, you go to work.
I got you.
And what am I there for, right? Now, when I speak about participating, I represent the 16 million who all went, whether you were inducted or you volunteered, that's the material. You're a band of brothers. And we did what, whether you're a truck driver with the Red Bull Highway, or a cook, or a typist, you were there, part of there. You suffered with us. These guys are not here, and I cry to this day.
Sure.
So I'm very appreciative of you guys having me here, not because of me, but I want the young people to understand that if it weren't for that group, this country would be a different country.
And here we are, in our own city. You've lived in Thousand Oaks since what year?
'61.
'61, long before it was even a city. I was born in '64, so was the city, and you were here in '61. And you have been with us the entire time, educating our young people and keeping the memory alive of the greatest event that set the world free. Well, folks, this has been another T.O. Talks with Len Zerlin, an amazing gift to this community. And folks, remember D-Day and all those that served, because we have our freedom because of men and women who served us so faithfully, and the story has been faithfully told by Len. Thank you, Len, for being with us today.
My pleasure, it's an honor to be here.
And with us also is Harry Norkin, who was in the U.S. Army Air Corps. And when Len was flying these B-26 Marauders, and he'd be coming back from the mission, Harry would keep them fixed, and he would patch all the bullet holes and keep the engine running. Ladies and gentlemen, Harry Norkin. You've earned the right to share. And if we go long tonight, so be it. Take over.
My old friend.
All right.
We go back so many years, Harry and I.
Please, talk to the city and let everyone know whatever's on your heart, both of you.
I really have not much to say. I prepared a few words before I came, because I felt I would have to make a speech. But I'm gonna keep it short, because I know long-storing speeches. Anyway, Mayor, City Council, and distinguished guests, thank you for honoring me and Len tonight, and all the other veterans of World War II. Thank you for honoring my service and Len's to our country at a time of need. However, while the spotlight shined on me and Len, and all the other surviving veterans of that great conflict, I feel that this spotlight should be also shining on those who gave their lives in the pursuit of liberty and justice. Thank you for honoring us. Perfect, Harry. Perfect. Same feelings. We go from an old generation.
Do you share what's on your heart, Len?
It's a very emotional period for us. We, I want to make you aware the fact that what we did was part of a generational feeling that we had to do something. And there was no heroes involved in this endeavor, I think. We did because we had to destroy an evil dictatorship. And was very motivating, because what motivated besides the attack on Pearl Harbor, my grandfather, who came from Russia, and then we had family in Poland, was saying we were losing Jewish families. And I said, how can we allow this? So between the fact of Pearl Harbor and the fact that we didn't know there was such a thing as a concentration camp, that I was motivated more than I had to. And what's most interesting is that when I went to enlist, I don't know if you know this story, Harry? No, I don't. I was rejected, because years back, when I was eight and a half, I had pneumonia, and they had to remove part of my lung, on my ribs. And there's a hole as big as my fist in my back to get the pus out. Well, that was when I was eight years of age. So I completely, I forgot about that. I built a muscle, I was involved in racing, and tennis, and so forth. And then when I went to be enlisted, when I enlisted, the guy says to me, the doctor says, I'm sorry, young fellow, get your ass out of here. We're all naked there.
We're gonna have to bleep that out, you know.
Okay, bleep it out.
We'll keep the pus in, but we have to keep the...
What's most interesting is the fact that he says, get out of here, we got other kids to take care of. We can't allow this, because you have a problem. I said, I run, I'm active. And as a result, I said, can I have another opinion? He said, Dr. Rosenslaw, would you please come and take this kid off my back? And the other doctor says to me, what is your anxiety? Go home and get a defense job, kid. Your family will be very happy. I said, I think they're killing Jewish people. He says, go ahead, get in. Strange story. So that was beginning of my life and the service.
Well, it's an honor to have the privilege to spend time with the two of you, and that our city would be honored with your presence. We have commendations for you. This, these are, it has my signature, which is worth nothing.
Well, well. It's worth it to us.
Well, you're sweet.
Yes.
So I have one for each of you, and I'm not gonna take time to read it, because I want to have the council take pictures with you, if you wouldn't mind.
Not in the least.
You're okay with that?
Not at all.
So come on out, we'll meet over here on the red carpet and get a picture with you. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please give a rounding applause, standing ovation?
Thank you.
Harry, was this your water? We have one more special presentation. Deputy of Cultural Affairs Jonathan Sarrett will discuss the city's upcoming Pop Arts and Music Festival. And I'm gonna go back to my seat and watch it. So enjoy it, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to share with you the upcoming events for the 2019 Pop-Up Arts and Music Festival. This is our second year of our festival, which will feature events over the remaining weekends this month. Several of our events will have food trucks or vendors for attendees who are interested. All of the events are free and open to the public. This is our opportunity to take the arts out of the theater and out into the community. So please bring your blankets and chairs, or have a picnic while enjoying these great entertainment opportunities. Our first event will take place this Friday at 7:00 PM at Oak Brook Park with VersaStyle Dance Company. They are a hip-hop dance crew and will be kicking off our events. Our family movie screening was very popular last year. So popular, in fact, we decided to do another one. This year, we'll be screening the animated feature Sing on Saturday, June 15th, at Tree Unfo Park. This event is great for attendees of all ages. Special activities, including kids karaoke, will begin at 7:00 PM prior to the movie. Join us at 7:00 PM on Friday, June 21st, at Thousand Oaks Community Park for a special concert featuring Sir Please and their special guests. This up-and-coming pop-rock band opened for REO Speedwagon during the concerts this past January in the Cavley Theater. This will be a fun, energetic evening that you won't want to miss. The Stagecoach Museum proved to be a great location for a concert last year, and we are excited to be returning on Saturday, June 22nd. This year's concert will feature two great folk Americana music groups, Suzie Glaze and the New Folk Ensemble, and Teresa James and the Rhythm Tramps. Let your creativity take flight. On Sunday, June 23rd, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM, we are partnering with our friends at Art Trek for an afternoon of kite designing and building. Once your kite is decorated and assembled, try taking it out for a spin at Borched Community Park. On Friday, June 28th, our resident musical theater company, Five Star Theatricals, will present An Evening with Stephen Sonheim. This concert will be staged right next door at the Lakes, and will begin at 7:00 PM. Get there early with your blanket or chair, or enjoy patio dining at one of the local restaurants. Just saying, but this could make for a fun date night with dinner and a show. To close out our Pop-Up Arts and Music Festival activities this year, another resident company, the New West Symphony, will present the Leah Ziegler Quintet at Northwood Park on Saturday, June 29th at 7:00 PM. As a violinist and a vocalist, Leah Ziegler and her quintet will bring exciting entertainment for a fantastic evening under the stars. All of these events are free of charge and open to the public. Although presented by the city of Thousand Oaks, we have a number of partners helping us to make this festival a success. Caneo Recreation and Park District, the New West Symphony, Brogdon Bay Presents, Art Trek, Five Star Theatricals, and the Lakes Thousand Oaks. For more information about the Pop-Up Arts and Music Festival, or for the lineup, please visit www.civicartsplaza.com/popup. We hope to see you there. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share these events with our great community.
Thanks so much. One more thing I wanted to share is, we have a couple of scouts from Troop 787 here tonight. Stand up, fellas.
Hello.
I didn't get a chance to talk with you and find out what mayor badge you're working on. Communications? All right, then you need to talk louder. All right, thanks. Thanks, fellas. Have a seat. For those of you who don't know, I think 26 of the first 29 U.S. astronauts were Eagle Scouts, and all 12 of the astronauts that walked on the moon were Eagle Scouts. The scouting here is remarkable, and you guys are in a great organization. So thanks for coming out tonight. All right, so, yeah. That brings us to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion or anything, any items that want to be pulled? Huh? Oh, public comments, my bad. Maybe it was a Freudian slip there. Public comments. Would you announce that, please?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing, items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Eighteen individuals have presented cards. In pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed two minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so tonight, I'll state the names, and then I'll state the second name, so the person will know, just to be ready, because we've got quite a few tonight. Our first is gonna be Rebecca Tatum, followed by Adam Haverstock. So Rebecca, you're up, and then Adam, you're next. When you get to about 10 seconds, I'll let you know and put a caboose on the end of the comment train.
Great.
Good evening.
Hello, city council. It is an honor and a privilege to be here before you tonight. I am a veteran Air Force, a retired registered nurse with advanced degrees, and now a retired radio host. Dr. Rebecca Tatum, Real Women, Real Talk Radio, simple, real talk to help people with real life. I love my country, I love my community, and I'm gonna say it, I love God, my parents, my pastor, and I love the President. It is easy, because they have proven they love me back. My concern tonight is this, it's getting harder and harder to love it here. Near impossible, if some steps progress, that will change this community for all intents and purposes for good. Now, the other night, I was at your church, Mayor, and yes, I love you too. You have earned my respect in this community. But I was there at an event, and when it was time to leave, it should have taken me five minutes to get home. I'm right down the street. Instead, it took 20. Why? More roadwork, traffic, more lights, and more time at the lights. And it has only just begun. You see, I hear now there are approvals on the books in Camarillo Springs and Newberry Park to put in 500 more family units. It's been approved. Now, there is one in Jeopardy due to flood zone issues, but if you've ever tried to get over the Camarillo grade at rush hour, you just might as well give in. You're not gonna make it on time. And yes, the Camarillo grade, that is another issue. You see, with all the traffic, there's also an upgrade coming here in this community in wireless technology. Smart meters and Wi-Fi were put in my home without me even knowing about it. 5G, I know about it coming, as I was watching TV last night, and I was informed that... and purposes for good. Now, the other night, I was at your church, Mayor, and yes, I love you too. You have earned my respect in this community. But I was there at an event, and when it was time to leave, it should have taken me five minutes to get home, I'm right down the street. Instead, it took 20. Why? More roadwork, traffic, more lights, and more time at the lights, and it has only just begun. You see, I hear now there are approvals on the books in Camarillo Springs and Newberry Park to put in 500 more family units. It's been approved. Now, there is one in Jeopardy due to flood zone issues, but if you've ever tried to get over the Camarillo grade at rush hour, you just might as well give in, you're not going to make it on time. And yes, the Camarillo grade, that is another issue. You see, with all the traffic, there's also an upgrade coming here in this community in wireless technology. Smart meters and Wi-Fi were put in my home without me even knowing about it. 5G, I know about it coming, as I was watching TV last night, and I was informed that AT&amp;T will be rolling out the 5G revolution, a step in the direction of full-blown 5G in this area. I went to the AT&amp;T store today, and I asked about it. Yes, it is coming. Now, I've seen some of the pieces forming, one at a time, and I have found them on the DAR approved, including not one, but two cell towers over my small senior community with a direct line of sight to Pepetree Playfield, where hundreds bring their families every weekend for soccer events. Now, the Camarillo grade, there are some new things happening there.
Dr. Tatum, your time's up. I was trying to give you a signal to the best of my ability.
Oh, my goodness. Can I leave this with you?
Absolutely.
A doctor went to the Camarillo grade and measured it, he has actual numbers for you, and if it is in your purview, my city council, I'm not sure what else to do, please love this community back. Thank you.
Dr. Tatum, Dr. Tatum. Dr. Tatum, hello. Would you please state your city of residence? In fact, would all the speakers get in the habit of doing that, please?
Hi, I live at 119 La Fortuna in Newberry Park, California, and I paid off my home.
Congratulations. Adam Haverstock, followed by Carol Tasetta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Adam Haverstock, I am the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce, with some updates for you tonight. First and foremost, a couple of events. The first is the Chamber's Regional Economic Forecast, coming up on Friday, June 21st. It's a week from Friday. It's going to be at the Sheraton Agora Hills Hotel at 7:00 AM, it's a breakfast event, and it's our annual economic forecast. So we're going to have Dr. Matthew Fienup, who is the Director of SURF, the Center for Economic Research and Forecasting at CLU, providing the forecast. And then also, we like to feature a keynote speaker, and so this year, we're going to have Kristin Deekus, who is the CEO of the Port of Huonimi, who is going to give an update from the port, because obviously it's a huge economic development engine for the county of Ventura. Tickets are on sale on the Chamber's website at canochamber.org. On Wednesday, July 10th, in the evening, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, the Emerging Leaders, which is the Young Professionals Group at the Chamber of Commerce, is going to have their mixer. It's going to be at Brendan's Irish Pub here in Newberry Park, and it's for young professionals aged 21 to 40, but you do not need to be a Chamber member, it's open to the public, regardless of whether they're a member or not, but they do need to be under the age of 40, it's specifically for young professionals. And then finally, I wanted to tell you about a new service we're offering at the Chamber of Commerce. There is a new California law that requires that employees at companies of five or more need to have harassment training, workplace harassment training, for at least one hour, and supervisors need to have two hours of harassment training every two years. Through a partnership with California Chamber of Commerce, we're offering that harassment training. You can do it online with video and quizzes through a partnership with Cal Chamber, and we can offer that at the Chamber of Commerce. That is open to all businesses, but there is a discount for Chamber members. So if any businesses are interested, they can go to our website or contact me after. And unless there are any questions, that does conclude my report this evening.
Thanks, Adam. Carol Tasetta, followed by Kristi Turner.
Mayor Troy, city council.
Good evening.
I'm going to try something new tonight. Let's see, I've seen other people do this, so we'll see. Does that work? Yes, I know, can you all see that? Okay.
Yep, we got it.
So basically, I was trying to understand better the limits that your expert Jonathan Kramer had discussed regarding the 1996 Telecom Act, and FCC national standards in 1997. Quote-unquote, he says there's a 50 times safety margin between the maximum we can be exposed without even knowing it, and the point where you can actually measure an effect from that exposure. So, you know, inquiring minds want to know, I wanted to better understand where he came up with these kind of standards. So I checked the FCC government website, under General Policy, and on August 1st, 1996, the Commission adopted maximum permissible exposure limits for frequencies, for transmitters operating at frequencies of 300 kilohertz to 100 gigahertz. Sorry, it's a little bit out of my comfort zone with all these terminologies. So basically, I'm sorry, this isn't the best, the best graph, but basically, the 4G we have kind of goes to 6 gigahertz, and the 5G would go anywhere from 30 gigahertz all the way to 100 gigahertz. And in the FCC website, they say that, ooh dang, look at that time, sorry, that at the time, there are no current exposure standards. Is that real? Wow, that went fast. That basically, but they refer to permissible limits, and I want to show you that really quickly. Wow, that time flew by. Basically, if you look here, the limits are, I have to take this back, go up to 100,000 megahertz, and current 5G will expose us up to 1 million megahertz. And I can leave this with you if you want, but basically, the 5G is literally off the charts.
Okay, thank you, you can leave it with the clerk, and we'll take a look at it. Our next speaker will be Kristi Turner. Folks, please state your city of residence.
Can the previous speaker state their... Could you tell me your city of residence, please?
We need city of residence, please, so we have, thank you, Kristi Turner, followed by Tricia Brazil.
Hi, my name is Kristi Turner, I've been a Realtor and resident of the Cano Valley for 16 years. I work for Pinnacle Properties in Westlake Village, and have been recognized as top 10% of agents company-wide. People move here for a better life and better schools. This is truly a matter of life and death, and the single most terrifying thing happening right now. We will not allow for these small cell towers to be placed every 250 feet on every 2 to 10 homes. The rollout of 5G has woken us up, but currently, we are exposed to microwave radiation 24/7 on a daily basis known as non-ionized radiation. Research has determined conclusively by a $25 million study by the federal government that cell phones cause breakage of our blood-brain barrier and cancer. Studies conclusively confirm DNA damage, cell death, autism, ADD, lowered fertility, endocrine effects, insomnia, heart arrhythmias, neurological, and miscarriages. Kids are sick and too afraid to tell their parents because they don't want their iPad or cellphone taken away. They describe the symptoms as ants crawling on their head, and they are going home sick from wireless technology in their classrooms. Most of us feel it, but we ignore it. Dr. Leonard of the World Health Organization is now calling to change classification to Group 1 definite human carcinogen. We will be presenting this to the Board of Realtors on June 20th, and have informed over 3,000 local agents, and are getting to local businesses and Amgen. Research indicates over 90% of homebuyers and renters are less interested in properties near cell towers. Price drops of 20% is found in multiple surveys and published articles. HUD considers cell towers as hazardous and nuisances. We already have several people moving out of the area. This will be profit now, but loss later. Stop giving tech companies a reason to continue this by ditching your Wi-Fi and hardwiring with fiber optics and ethernet cords. Ask your service provider to turn your Wi-Fi off from the back end. Call your local building biologists, so they can make your home environmentally safe. We have names to recommend. Please give us a chance and help keep these towers out. Thank you.
Thank you, mister. Tricia Brazil, followed by Peggy Rosenberg.
In Thousand Oaks, California.
Yeah, you said it, thank you. Yeah, thank you for stating your city of residence. Tricia Brazil, followed by Peggy Rosenberg.
Hi, city council, I'm Tricia Brazil, I live in Thousand Oaks, California, this is my husband Steve Brazil.
Hey.
All right, to be clear, on the 5G implementation, we're talking about microwave radiation antennas being implemented as close as 15 feet from our homes and throughout our entire city. These technologies are not proven safe. Our homes are not proven safe. There will be no choice in escaping the EMFs. As a result, citizens who are informed and recognize the harms of 5G will relocate to other areas where they are fighting the fight against 5G better and stronger than Thousand Oaks currently is. Cities like Mill Valley have blocked the deployment of 5G with an urgency ordinance amending the municipal code and establishing facility regulations that protect residential zones from the coming installations. Marin County and San Asama passed similar ordinances, why not Thousand Oaks? The ADA, the ADA already recognizes, the ADA already recognizes electromagnetic sensitivity as a disability. Implementation of 5G small cell towers will worsen the health of those who can physically fill the EMFs, as well as those who cannot. California firefighters have been on the front line of this fight for the past 20 years. As a result, California legislation has granted an exemption from SB 649 to firefighters who have rejected cell tower installations on fire stations due to proven health impacts. I'm 31, and I'm expecting my first child in November. My husband owns two local restaurants, and we are very involved with the community. Many consider Thousand Oaks to be an affluent, safe place where city officials hold themselves and our city at a higher standard than the majority of the surrounding cities. This fight against 5G is no exception to the responsibility you have to keep Thousand Oaks at a higher standard. This topic is unrecognized in society, and as a result, the industry is winning the fight at the expense of our health. We are all a modern-day experiment in an already severely cancer-stricken society. The FCC's current recommendations are based on 20-year-old studies, this is unacceptable. The industry is biased and well-funded to overlook this and move forward to further their profits in gathering data. My family and everyone else in this room against 5G implementation has an expectation that you and your fellow representatives will recognize the weight and severity of this matter, and hold the industry accountable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy Rosenberg, followed by Joy Dupuis, if you'd state your city of residence, thank you.
Peggy Rosenberg, 28-year resident of Thousand Oaks. City council members, I thank you for the opportunity to come before you again, as one of your constituents, to share with you my concerns. I'm frustrated, disappointed, and frankly annoyed to attend these meetings, only to leave, time after time, with a sense of not having truly been heard and understood on the matter of 5G small cell facilities to be installed here in Thousand Oaks. I find it disappointing and telling that I didn't see a single council member among the standing-room-only crowd who took the time Friday evening to attend a free presentation by a highly-trained and respected technological specialist. The event was local, open to all, and free, so why was there no council member interested enough in this threat to our community to come and learn what might be helpful in the battle and minimize the negative impacts of this technology? We're not unreasonably requesting that you do the impossible, stop the arrival of 5G in Thousand Oaks. We're simply requesting a 1,500-foot setback from residential areas here, much as other cities have done around the country, sorry. We all know it is possible, so we are asking you to truly step up, speak up for us at every appropriate government level and at every possible opportunity. We ask that you just say no to the installations of the 5G cell, small cell facilities closer than 1,500 feet to any residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Dupuis, followed by Paige Nielsen. Paige Nielsen, you're up, after Joy.
Hi there, I'm Joy Dupuis, I live in Thousand Oaks.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you guys, I was up on your website, for passing an urgency ordinance and enacting some standards based on aesthetic standards, which is all any of us are allowed to do. It's comforting to know that the federal government puts aesthetics before our health. Okay, that was a joke, but that's all right. Okay, so, most importantly, our city is a member of the League of California Cities, one of the named parties in a federal lawsuit challenging these new FCC rules, so I'm really grateful to see that up there. I wanted to tell you a little bit about our conundrum, mine and my husband's conundrum as a couple. We have a business in Ventura, we own a home in Thousand Oaks. The city of Ventura became the latest municipality to pass an emergency ordinance to regulate the small wireless facilities before the April 15 deadline set by the FCC. The Ventura City Council's 7-0 vote put the emergency ordinance into effect immediately. It appeals to us, this strong show by vote, that the citizens of Ventura are important enough to challenge the FCC. I found a document that I wanted to leave with you guys. It is called Captured Agency: How the Federal Communications Commission is Dominated by the Industries It Presumably Regulates. And it was put out by the Harvard School of Ethics, 60 pages, but it's a really excellent read. And I just want to say that I love the mission statement of Thousand Oaks. Extraordinary service to the citizens we serve is our purpose. I want to ask you guys, will you be TOs, David against the Goliath of the FCC? Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Joy. We have Paige Nielsen, followed by Vadim Monzos. Paige, did you want to leave? Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
I live in Westlake. Published on May 31st, 2019, in the journal E-Biomedicine, said scientists at Wake Forest School of Medicine discovered that non-ionized radiation does affect our cells. Support of the study was approved by the National Cancer Institute. The FDA approved a chemotherapy treatment with the non-ionized radiation at very low levels for malignant pleural mesothelioma. It's being used in breast cancer, brain metastasis, colorectal cancer, which is soaring in young adults, that epidemiologist DKU claims is from using smartphones and wants everyone to know. The opposite effect of this radiation at high levels causes great biological harm of all living creatures and people. Has your wireless attorney, who said in front of your council and in public record, that non-ionizing radiation doesn't cause biological harm, informed you that it does now? If he hasn't given this information, that's very important, ask yourselves why. Blue Cross Blue Shield released a report, April 24th of this year, saying that millennials, the first generation to grow up on cell phones, are experiencing a higher level of unprecedented health issues from major depression, psychosis, disease of colitis, diabetes. Approximately, a number of people, scientists, Arthur Firstenberg stopped 5G a pill on Earth and in space. 2,000 scientists, 1,400 medical doctors, 4,000 engineers, 2,200 nurses, 2,500 psychologists, 1,200 organizations, 100,000 individuals from 187 countries. Proverbs 1:5, "Let the wise listen and add their learning, and let discerning get guidance." Proverbs 1:7, "The fear of the Lord is beginning of knowledge. Fools despise wisdom and instruction. We are all accountable to help those that don't know what's harming them. Please stand up to the FCC, protect the people as the rights of our Constitution." Thank you.
Thank you. Vadim will be followed by Tanya.
Hello. Good evening, city council members.
I'm sorry, Vadim first, then Tanya.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm jammed in two minutes, I'm going to read quickly. I'm here tonight to talk about 6G. Yes, it's not a joke, it's a 6G. I know we're all immersed in 5G, but what if I told you that 6G is already here and offers you a way out of telecoms mess? According to investor newspaper Samsung Electronics has opened a new research center for the development of core technology for 6G mobile networks, joining the global race for the still rising technology, a company officially reported on June 4th. The upcoming 6G aims to integrate satellites for global coverage to provide far higher data rates and faster internet speeds than 5G, according to International Research Journal of Engineering Technology. SpaceX has already launched 20,000 satellites into space to bring us 6G. Unlike 5G, 6G is a lot more reliable despite the satellites operating from space. None of those satellites has failed their testing and are able to cover far greater distances than the 5G technology. We all know there was something fishy with 5G, not only the pulse microwave radiation functions on much shorter waves, but the most important part of its downfall is that the telecoms are not covered by any reinsurance worldwide. This means that the reinsurance know that 5G is going to become the next smoking or asbestos bubble. So why would we rush to employ 5G small cell facility? Why would we destroy the face of our beautiful Thousand Oaks with a small cell facility every 250 feet when 6G is already promising more effective? Whether you are a teacher, a health industry person, or just a layman like me on the street, the choice is simple, don't rule out our 5G. It's destined to fail. Amen. The ordinance is to not make Thousand Oaks less attractive to the telecoms...
Thank you.
...and use 6G instead.
Thank you, Vadim. Tanya, if you'd state your city of residence, and Bill Lind will be following Tanya. Hello.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Okay, here we go. Dr. Barry Trower is a world-renowned physicist, researcher, scientist, who is trained in all aspects of radiation technology and its health dangers. He works independently and has never accepted money from anyone or any organization while doing his research. He has numerous degrees, and his specialty encompasses the absorption of microwaves on the high end of the spectrum. Low-level microwaves are more dangerous to our health, and neurological damage can occur within a year, as well as miscarriages, cancers, leukemia, to name a few. Dr. Trower says anybody who puts Wi-Fi in a school should be locked up for life. After doing extensive research, he came to the conclusion that the technological advancement is not worse than genetic problems that humanity will be facing. is not worth the genetic problems that humanity will be facing, especially the most vulnerable being children and infants. The high risks for deformities and fetuses have been published, and this is what is called intentional ignorance. It seems that our officials choose some form of incentive over the safety of humans, animals, and the ecosystem. The harmful effects of EMF radiation damage one generation after the other. A pregnant woman will give birth to a child with already genetically damaged eggs. The eggs in the child’s ovaries are not equipped to protect themselves against the radiation and therefore can’t develop properly. To make matters worse, if a woman doesn’t even realize she’s pregnant in the first critical 100 days, no precautions are taken. So imagine your sister, your daughter, your niece, your grandchild will have damaged eggs. So when she has children, it is likely that one of those damaged eggs will produce a child with health challenges. This research has been published by highly-respected scientists and biologists. If radiation damages humans’ DNA, it will damage all living organisms on the planet, including plants, crops, and animals. Due to their size, pollinating insects are the most vulnerable to radiation.
Tanya, your time’s up. Thank you.
Oh, it’s a shame, I really had good stuff.
Well, go ahead and leave. If you’d like to leave it for us, we’ll read it.
Okay.
Yeah, what’s your city of residence?
I’m sorry, Thousand Oaks.
Thank you. All right, Bill Lind, followed by Judy Bruce. You can leave it with the clerk, and we’ll get it. Thank you, dear.
My name is Bill Lind, I reside in Ventura, California. I’m happy to announce that we’re going to be exercising our First Amendment rights by filing civil actions against the 5G small cell tower facility in the Thousand Oaks area. Regarding the FCC ruling, what the city attorney has been telling you is law is not law. We will prove that 18133 has not been codified into law and that there is no congressional act that mandates this technology be imposed on us. The reason why you’ve been told your hands are tied by the law is because the corrupt legal system uses trickery with words and phrases. They use sleight of hand and give illusion that different words mean the same thing. An example of this trickery is using the word “law” and “regulation” interchangeably. A person who claims a regulation is a codified law can be accused of fraud. Our legal researcher read every paragraph of the TCA Acts, aka Title 47, in regards to who it applies and under what basis, and took five hours. Specifically, Title 47 of the Code of Federal Regulations is a body of law only between the FTC and the telecoms. To set the stage, every public official must take an oath to support the Constitution of the U.S. and the state of California. Here are your oaths here, of the City Council. Oaths taken by the attorneys, Noonan and Kramer, are under 6067 and must do the same, and it is attached to their license. They can be sued under the breach of oath for the lack of credentials to practice law. Under what authority do you have to violate the oath? The basic requirement is, show me the statute passed by Congress and how and if it applies to the situation. One must look to the Code of Federal Regulation under Title 47 to determine if they exist and if they are enforceable upon the populace. We demand that you provide us with the congressional act that gives authority to blanket us with these poison delivery systems.
Two minutes. Next speaker.
Hey, I just went over a little bit.
Next speaker, please.
I just went over a little bit on my speech, and you slammed the gavel on me.
That’s it. You wouldn’t stop. You wouldn’t stop. Sit down. Please sit down. Please sit down. Next speaker, Judy Bruce. Please state your city of residence. Next will be Robert O’Riley.
My name is Judy Bruce, I’m from Simi Valley. This is part two of the same comment. Bottom line, according to the Telecommunications Act 34 and 35, Title 47, yeah, it does exist. Does it apply to the City Council? No. It only applies to the telecoms. The FCC has no authority, and Ms. Noonan, I’d like you to look up, please, has no authority where to put the wireless. Only Congress can do that.
She’s typing while she’s doing it, so she doesn’t have to look up.
Breaking news, there is no issues about health in Title 47. Therefore, restricting health must be abolished. Cities have sovereign rights. Your hands are not tied. We will exercise our First Amendment rights to exercise our grievances that the policies that expose us to this electromagnetic frequency is, we’re going to use a mandamus agreement, which can be state or federal, and mandamus is a petition to demand an official follow their oath and to point out what mandate is there to allow these poison delivery systems on us. When the FCC imposes this overreach, we will use a mandamus or a civil RICO for an injunctive relief. We will be asking the court to declare the rights of parties for declaratory relief using Code 28 USC, Code 2201, and an injunctive relief using 28 USC 2202. A declaratory relief declares the laws that give us power or not. Where’s the CFR? Where’s the law that mandates us to use that product or service? An injunctive relief is a request for an injunction using a federal magistrate on the basis of corruption. In summary, there is no law to support the FCC ruling, according to Title 47 of the CFRs. Therefore, the wireless ordinance has no basis in law and must be abolished. Also illegal is assaulting our city with these dangerous small cells, and therefore must be stopped. We have entered into public record the US codes that have been enacted into permanent law. Here it is, right here. Thank you.
Robert O’Riley, followed by Kathy Willet. Sorry about that.
That’s okay, don’t worry about it, it’s not the traditional spelling. I will first take a turn here and thank you, Mayor McCoy, and the rest of the council for having us and the staff, and thank you also for the LGBTQ+ proclamation that you signed for us. And then I will say that 17 days from today will mark the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall riots. While much progress has been made, we must not stop fighting now. With our LGBTQ+ and gender nonconforming youth facing suicide rates far higher than their peers, and our trans women of color being brutally murdered at an unprecedented rate, it is of grave importance that this community and these humanitarian issues be acknowledged publicly and recognized at the policymaking level. The LGBTQ+ and gender nonconforming community must have a voice at the table when policies are being made around behavioral health, homelessness, and substance abuse. So we would like to, again, thank you for this, but we ask that you provide a public proclamation presentation in the future, if that is an option. I was told that it is an option, but with all of the ones that you do give out, you can’t commit to doing one for every group or every person who asks for it. But I want to ask for an exception to that. I want to be one of those groups that gets it. I don’t want to be, right? I want the community, all of us, to get it, because we’re being forgotten and left behind, a lot of the rights are being taken away from the LGBTQ+ community. And what my concern is, we’re just going to be forgotten just in discussion when it comes to policies on behavioral health, like I said, homelessness, drug, substance abuse. We are people, we are your sons, we are your daughters, fathers, mothers, and we’re being murdered and we’re being forgotten. So don’t forget us. Thank you again.
Thanks for coming out.
And I’m from Ventura.
Okay.
From Ventura.
Thanks for coming out, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Kathy Willet. Follow, hi Kathy.
Good evening, thank you so much, my name is Kathy Willet. Oh, and if we could view what’s on the overhead?
Sure.
Kathy Willet, I’m a 22-year resident of Thousand Oaks. I also wanted to echo the sentiments that Robert just gave. Thank you so much for approving this proclamation that LGBTQ+ Pride Month is June in Thousand Oaks. I think this is a wonderful thing that the City Council has done, as well as the city overall. How far we have come in the time that I’ve been a resident, I’d like to express also my gratitude for the evolving way that the city has come. When I first moved here, my daughter was a wee child, and she went all through Thousand Oaks schools. She identifies with the LGBTQ+ community, and she went through a lot of difficult times when she was in school due to her LGBTQ identification. I think this is a wonderful step in the right direction to help everybody become more aware of the specific needs that people have in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Warren Wolf, was there anyone else that wanted to? Maybe I had, who do we have next? It’s Warren Wolf, Alex Valdez, or? Did I miss somebody? Do you have it on the list? Because I can have you.
Yeah, we’re both on the list.
Okay, come on. You get two minutes, it’s all right. If I got it out of order, we’ll just fix it.
Thank you, Mayor.
You’re welcome.
I’m Celia Sandeher Daniels, I am a trans woman of color. I live in Thousand Oaks with my family. I’m an entrepreneur, I’m a musician, I’m a movie maker, I’m a trans activist, and I echo the voice of the unheard transgender and gender nonconforming and LGBTQ youth, teens, and adults in the community. I especially want to recognize and thank you for the Pride last year. It was an amazing event. I have lived in different parts of the country, but I’ve never felt so safe living in Thousand Oaks, where I could really come out. And coming from a Christian conservative background, I have spoken proudly about my gender dysphoria, about my life to the people, so that they will know that I am real, I’m not perfect. People like us are real. But thank you for this beautiful proclamation, it means a lot to us, and we want to thank you for recognizing us, and we want to request you that next year, we would love to do a short presentation in terms of the 30,000 people that live in Conahou Valley and Ventura County. Almost 30,000 LGBTQ folks are here, that we want to thank you for your recognition. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then the other one on the list, do we have it backwards? What do we have?
Yes, Mayor McCoy, Mayor Pro Tem Adam. My name is Stephen Auclair, I live in Port Wainimi. I currently serve as president at the Greater Oxnard Organization of Democrats. We represent over 50,000 Democrats in the Greater Oxnard area. But first, I really want to thank you for joining your fellow cities of Simi Valley, Ventura, Port Wainimi, Oxnard, and Moore Park, and as of this morning, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors in proclaiming LGBT Pride Month in your city for June 2019. It is the 50th anniversary of Stonewall, and we have certainly come a long way, but there’s a long way to go, including here in Ventura County and here in Thousand Oaks. I did want to share the concern that others had highlighted, that the council nor the mayor chose to recognize LGBT Pride Month, particularly in the 50th anniversary, in a public way. So although the proclamation is very nice, and it will be displayed along with the others at the Diversity Collective headquarters, so that youth from Thousand Oaks and across the county can see that their elected officials believe in them, believe in their safety, and believe in the LGBTQ community, and that they have a place here in Ventura County. So thank you again for signing the proclamation, Mr. Mayor. And of course, there is more to be done to save lives in Ventura County and across the country. As you know, recently in the news, they’ve highlighted several incident, several, multiple times in the last couple weeks of particularly trans individuals being attacked, trans women of color. So it’s important to highlight that that is still happening across our country. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Council.
Thank you. Michael, were you going to share? Were you on there? No? Okay. Next will be Alex Valdez. Is that right?
You had called Warren Wolf prior?
Yeah, Warren Wolf, my bad. We got a little mixed up there.
Hi, my name is Warren, I live in Thousand Oaks. You know, the federal government and the telecommunications industry is going to subject harmful 5G microwave radiation on every citizen in the United States without their consent. And they have strong-armed local city governments to help them accomplish this goal. This is clearly wrong. It shouldn’t matter if Congress and the FCC pass laws and regulations insisting on 5G proliferation, because it’s a responsibility of the people, the city government and the state government, to refuse to comply. The 10th Amendment to the Constitution says the powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution, nor prohibited by it, to the states, are reserved to the states respectively, or to the people. Our country is founded upon the human right of citizens to resist oppression and unjust laws. The 1996 Telecommunications Act and the FCC mandates are unjust laws or regulations that violate an individual’s right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. You say that you have no choice but to follow the FCC mandates, but if you have objectively looked at the science, scientific evidence about the dangers of microwave radiation, then it’s your moral obligation to disobey. Martin Luther King Jr. said, “One has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws.” Thomas Jefferson said, “If a law is unjust, a man is not only right to disobey it, he is obligated to do so.” Henry David Thoreau said, “If the machine of government is of such a nature that it requires you to be the agent of injustice to another, then I say break the law.” He also said, “When a man’s conscience and the law’s clash, it is his conscience he must follow.” And lastly, Rosa Parks said, “I had no idea that history was being made, I was just tired of giving in. Please make history today by moving to block 5G from our city streets.”
Now it’s Alex. Is Alex here? Alex Valdez, followed by Audrey Bruckner.
Hi, I’m here to talk about the 5G issue too, and I’m here in particular because I’m.
Can you state your city of residence for the?
Newbury Park.
Thank you.
And I’m here because I’m convinced that I’m sensitive to electromagnetic fields, so I react in a more serious way than the general population when I’m exposed to higher levels. And I’m here in particular because there’s also thousands of studies, peer-reviewed science, showing that exposure to electromagnetic fields at lower levels than what our government deems safe is actually very harmful to humans and all of life. There’s been, for example, an appeal to the United Nations in which around 250 scientists engaged in the study of the biological and health effects of electromagnetic radiation appealed to the UN, asking for stricter standards and informing the public of the health risks. And again, these are scientists who dedicate their lives to studying just the health effects of electromagnetic radiation on human life and all of life. The appeal can be found on emfscientist.org, and scientists such as Dr. Martin Blank of Columbia University signed it, Martha Herbert of Harvard University, Martin Paul of Washington State University, so recognized scientists and experts in their field. So I think it should at least be taken seriously. And one last point on why there’s also, there’s a lot of evidence of no harm, is that industries are known to oppose scientific research that threatens their business models, for example, by designing studies in deceptively convenient ways. This has happened with tobacco, asbestos, pesticides, BPA, hydraulic fracturing, big oil, and the pharmaceuticals industry. So we know this happens already, it’s no surprise if there’s no evidence of harm from other studies.
Thank you. Audrey Bruckner, and then Dr. Kevin Naramore.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am sharing breaking news. To begin with.
Ms. Bruckner, your city of residence?
Oh, Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, dear.
To begin with, 5G is the foundation stone of smart cities, which Thousand Oaks is destined to be. In Toronto, Canada, high-profile technology investors and executives, including Jim Balsick, co-founder of BlackBerry, are now opposed to waterfront Toronto, a 12-acre co-founder of BlackBerry, are now opposed to Waterfront Toronto, a 12-acre partnership between Google Sidewalk Labs in the city of Toronto, destined to be a Google smart city. They commented that this project is a, quote, "colonizing experiment in surveillance capitalism, attempting to bulldoze important urban civic and political issues," end of quote. The idea was sold to them as be one of the world's first smart cities, drawing on environmentally conscious design and emerging technologies to, quote, "accelerate urban innovation and serve as a beacon for cities around the world," unquote. Roger McNamie, U.S. venture capitalist, co-founder of Silver Lake Partners, said, quote, "This project is the most highly evolved version to date of surveillance capitalism. It is a dystopian vision that has no place in a democratic society." Okay, another one. On May 29, Louisiana became the first state to call for their own independent study on health impacts of 5G. The Louisiana legislator passed House Resolution 145 with a vote of 103 in favor and zero representatives against the measure. They have halted the 5G rollout until they get-
Ms. Bruckner, your time's up, dear.
The result of their study.
Thank you. Dr. Kevin Narimore, followed by Linda Por.
Good evening, Mayor McCoy and City Council members.
Good evening.
Let me put this up here because I'm so tall. Before I came up, I gave to the front reception a research study. I hope they've given you a copy.
We've got it.
Okay, and it starts in an Acorn article. I've got some good news tonight. You know, it's been kind of a heavy night, very serious tone. I'd like to leave you with something, and I'm not kidding, something upbeat. So most of the City Council members now know that the proposed 5G small cell towers are not only going to be millimeter wavelength, which is above 20 gigahertz, but microwave, which is like above six or eight gigahertz. So past research about the effects of microwave cell tower, I think we should look at that because it does apply to the new technology. Reducing non-ionizing microwave radiation near living areas is ultimately a joyous thing. In 2014, Japanese physician, physician, Tatuharo Shinjo, published a before-and-after study in which he evaluated the health of residents of a condominium building in Okinawa upon whose roof cellphone antennas had been operating for several years. Prior to the removal of the antennas, 21 residents suffered from chronic fatigue, 14 from dizziness, vertigo or Meniere's disease, 14 from headaches, 17 from eye pain, dry eyes or repeated eye infections, 14 from insomnia, and 10 from chronic nosebleeds. Five months after the antennas were removed, no one in the building had chronic fatigue. No one had nosebleeds. No one had eye problems. Only two people still had insomnia. One still had dizziness. One still had headaches. Cases of gastritis and glaucoma were resolved. Doesn't it make common sense that reducing this radiation burden is a joyous thing? It's a good thing for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Por, followed by Lorena Savnatari.
Hello. How are you this evening? I'm from the city of Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village, in that little area back near Triumphal Park. And I'm going to try to read this as fast as I can, but I don't know if I'll get through it or not. I had an opportunity on three separate occasions to be allowed to voice my opinion here before. And I was able to personally be able to speak with the city attorney at a prior meeting. It's very gratifying to know that we can both communicate and hear and listen to each other and voice our thoughts. I have learned through the years that there is more than one way to reach the same results and stop arguing about how one does it as long as there's a good and positive result. Sometimes even when you want to reach a good result, you may have to do unorthodox things in order to achieve the best result. At the end of the 18th century, the number one problem in the United States was pollution. And that was because of all of the livestock in the country. But as being a country of ideas and keeping moving forward, we came up with a bright idea. We invented the automobile. Certainly that stopped the livestock pollution. However, it created a new pollution problem for the 20th century. Now we have several problems with radiation coming from all different things, the phone, the internet, 4G, 5G, et cetera. However, there are cures for this now, and the cost is not overburdening. Instead of cell towers, we can use fiber optics or hard wiring to eliminate this. Last year, the city of Thousand Oaks wanted to get rid of the telephone poles and the electrical wiring on Thousand Oaks Boulevard for safety reasons and also for beautification issues. The city, along with the residents, agreed to pay the extra cost to benefit all. It worked.
Your time's up now. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it. Thank you. Lorena Savnatari, and then followed by Mandy Jacob.
I always try to speak from here. Can I? Is that okay? I don't even tell Sir Knox what. I live part-time. I work for Landon Enchantment. It's a board and care for elderly. And I also, I am a citizen of, or resident of Camarillo. Last time I was here, I mentioned about Son's 5G towers that were being installed. And city attorneys say that it wasn't true. But, so I want to correct this mistake. So I went and investigated, and actually, the general city attorney said that those were smart meters. And actually, 5G is not just antennas, but 5G is any device that is going to be part of the rollout of the 5G. So smart meters for utility that are still producing emissions, radiation emissions. And I went on your website, and on page 12 says, "Move towards becoming a smart and wireless-connected city with complete wireless coverage." All right? That sounds very good. We all like to be things fast, be connected. Now, that was page 12. Page 15 says, "Find ways to enhance internet availability through the community." Now, if you read page four, one of the things that you state is maintain an equality of life, including public safety, operating in an open and transparent manner to maintain public trust and promote accountability to enhance effectiveness of city operations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mandy Jacob.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for allowing us all to address you tonight. And I know that it hasn't been easy for anyone. We are all-
Could you state your city of residence, please?
Oh, sorry. Newbury Park.
Thank you.
We all are fighting for the face of Thousand Oaks. And I just wanted to talk about a bit of misinterpretation of my last speech. When I spoke, you can go back and watch it on TV, I said that there was legal action that had been taken against the city. And I still hold true to my word that there was legal action. You can, the definition of legal action is not lawsuit. And I did not say lawsuit. I take very seriously every time I come and speak to you. I give you the truth. And I want you to know, I will stay by my word about legal action, and the rest I leave up to you. I'm sorry that you have to keep going back. On my behalf, I said, I did say Ventura County, and then changed to Ventura City when I was talking about the ordinance. And I did mean Ventura City because you're 100% correct. Ventura County is only 50 feet away. So that was my mistake. The mention about having disclaimers at the end of ordinances, I think is a great idea. And if that means that we can put in an ordinance and an amendment of six words saying, "Please give us a 1,500-foot setback," and at the end of the ordinance, 88 pages later, say, "But the disclaimer is this," that would be great. You know, we all keep saying the same things. It's all about verbiage. And I know that I'll, I know that we have put it down that we want commercial and industrial first. But if we can use words instead of encourage and preferred, use words like required, that just puts us in a better stand. And then the other misinformation was when I was talking about the ADA people or the people that were electromagnetically sensitive that couldn't come. Yes, of course, they didn't speak to the city and they didn't ask for any accommodations. They just couldn't come because they were put out by their illness for the next few days. So those, those were the things that I just wanted to-
Thank you. I appreciate that. Folks, I don't normally speak following comments. I want to share a couple of things in relation to 5G because, as you can see, we're staying right on the two-minute line. We have other city business to attend to. A number of you have been speaking at our meeting since the early spring. And the councils listen carefully, and I can testify, I have. The staff has responded factually. We've consistently steered you to the appropriate federal venue. I hope that you know by now, these FCC rules affect every city in the United States. We've shared this continually. The Thousand Oaks City Council, like cities across the country, we've taken action to update our ordinance and provide as much protection as possible within the law. Now, I know some of you are saying the doctrine of the lesser magistrate. You want us to contend. You say David and Goliath. We've had the same request for folks with SB 54. We've had the same request for folks concerned about the Boise ruling. And they want to spend the 167,000 citizens' taxpayer dollars for their one issue. When you state people like Rosa Parks, or Martin Luther King, or Dietrich Bonhoeffer, those are all citizens that nonviolently oppose these things. But calling upon the City Council where we have a pluralistic society and we have to deal with their tax dollars, this may be a big issue to you. And we'll listen. But I will stay to the two-minute mark. We're doing the best we can as a city. These proceed, there are court proceedings underway. Federal inquiries have been submitted. But nothing's changed to date. And we said we'd keep you updated on that. Until something of significance changes on those fronts, there are no further actions the City Council is going to take. None. I will also add that finally, as we've seen some recent correspondence involving personal attacks of our city staff, and I don't appreciate that. Calling them a liar, I don't like it. I don't, I don't need to state clearly and firmly that those types of actions are unacceptable and counterproductive. I opened up our facility for you to have your meeting and to say that I didn't attend because I'm attending my son's event in San Diego. I'm open, and I am very concerned about what's important to you. But to misrepresent this city staff is not acceptable. And then finally, continuing channeling your passions to the federal legislators, we'll continue to keep a watchful eye on the courts. But if you want more from us, you have the two minutes. We're going to hold to that two-minute, and we'll continue to keep you updated. And that's all I have to say about that. So we'll move on to our consent calendar. Do we have a motion for the consent calendar? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to add something? No? Okay.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote, please?
That motion carries 5-0, and your ordinance titles are Ordinance Amending Title V, Chapter 29, Sections 5-29.01, 5-29.06, 5-29.07, 5-29.08, 5-29.09, 5-29.12, 5-29.18, 5-29.22, 5-29.24, 5-29.27, 5-29.34, and 5-29.35 of the Municipal Code of the City of Thousand Oaks Regarding Commercial Cannabis and Personal Cannabis Cultivation, Ordinance Number 1662-N.S. And Ordinance Amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code Sections 5-808 and 5-809 of Title V, Chapter 8, Miscellaneous Offenses Regarding Camping and Sitting and Standing in Public Places, Ordinance Number 1663-N.S.
Thank you. Brings us to item number eight, Public Hearings 8A will be proposed FY 2019, '20, and FY 2020, '21 operating and capital improvement program budgets. And to facilitate that for us will be Jamie Boscarino, our Finance Director. Take it over.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Just for the record, I'm going to open the public hearing. We have zero speakers.
Well, good evening, Mayor McCoy, City Council members. I am here tonight, along with Brent Sakaida, Budget Officer, to present the fiscal year 2019, '20, and fiscal year 2020, '21 operating and CIP budgets. This is the final step and culmination of a very lengthy budget preparation process. Tonight's the public hearing for the budget, which essentially follows the same format as the previous study sessions. However, tonight's recommendation will be to adopt the operating and CIP budgets for fiscal year 2019, '20, and fiscal year 2020, '21. A brief reminder of the city's budget process. The city prepares and adopts a biennial budget, which includes the operating budget, CIP budget, and user fees. The city has had a biennial budget since the 1980s. This is the second budget process where we have included a community budget engagement element. The budget also incorporates City Council's top priorities. And here tonight, you're getting the first look at the new budget covers. Since it's the 25th anniversary of this facility in October, we thought it was rather fitting to have the cavalry grace the cover of the budgets. The city's budget process actually began before what's even shown on this timeline, all the way back in October, with our CIP budget kickoff. The first of several City Council presentations was back in February with our user fees study session. And we're finally here tonight for the budget adoption public hearing. Both the CIP budget and the operating budget were discussed in great detail at the study sessions back in April and May. So tonight, I'm just focusing on a high-level presentation and highlighting any major changes since the study session. Before we get into the development of the fiscal year 2019, 2021 budgets, I wanted to spend a moment to highlight what we have accomplished during the past two years. Based on the strong financial success over the past several years, in part due to a focus on fiscal sustainability, efficiencies, process improvements, the city was able to make significant one-time investments in several areas, including parks and recreation, the arts, and streets. The city was able to continue its strong partnership with CRPD and TO Arts and expand cultural and recreational opportunities for residents. We also ensured that the city's significant street infrastructure continued to be maintained, but also enabled the city to reduce some deferred street maintenance as well. Not even shown here is the 22.5 million across all funds that we set aside this past year towards pensions. These are just a few of the major highlights. Over $34 million in one-time expenditure investments were made, on top of adding over $30 million to our general fund fund balance. So with the combination of those two amounts, you're at over $64 million just in the past several years. Not many cities in this county or even in the state are as in good of financial shape as we are. I may sound like a broken record, but this is because of strong financial leadership from our City Council, from management, which we've had a really long history of long-term financial planning, proactive management, and we haven't been afraid to make tough decisions, not just during bad times, but during good times as well. Dedicated staff from across the organization, including a budget team of employees from each department, worked tirelessly on the development of the budget. This includes a thorough analysis of existing projects and programs, future needs, revenue and expenditure projections, staffing levels, laws and regulations, and City Council priorities. As you can imagine, with a two-year budget of this size, almost $450 million, providing services to 130,000 residents, there are probably 1,000 accounts that need to be budgeted. Staff, Brent and myself included, actually review every single line item which is in the proposed budget. It's a very lengthy process, but you can be assured that what is presented to you tonight is a prudent investment of the taxpayer and fee payer dollars, as we have analyzed all 400-plus million. The budget is structurally balanced, thus ongoing operating revenues exceed or meet ongoing operating expenditures. General fund reserves are only being used to support CIP projects or one-time initiatives. And that is key, that we are living within our means. The City Council set its reserve policy at a- The City Council set its reserve policy at a total of 20%, a 15% working capital, and 5% emergency reserve. That includes the general fund expenditure budget, library fund expenditure budget, and our CIP project budget carryover. So the 20% is calculated on the total of all of those amounts. In addition, there's also a 22.5 million citywide reserve set aside in the pension trust fund, as I just mentioned, which can be used to pay for pension costs, and that would get us through a few years of an economic downturn without having to budget for those costs. There's no increase to the citywide position count, and funds have been included based on City Council priorities for such items as homelessness efforts and borderline memorial. The operating budget is divided into multiple sections, as listed on the slide, with an overall citywide budget summary, a general fund summary, other summaries by fund, position summary, and then policies and performance measures at the end. As I mentioned, we previously went into great detail on the proposed budget at each study session, so tonight will just be a high-level overview. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2019-20 is 214.4 million citywide, with the bulk of the budget in the general fund, the city's discretionary fund that provides a wide range of services. The next two largest are the water and wastewater funds. The proposed citywide budget for fiscal year 2020-21 is 221.7 million, which is slightly higher, but that's primarily due to an increase in the water fund budget due to the groundwater treatment project, and in the lighting fund for the streetlight acquisition project. As I mentioned, the total position count is not changing, remaining at 381 city positions and 108 police positions. The chart shows the change in position count from fiscal year 1112 of 27 positions. Looking back even further, though, to 2007, the city has actually reduced its position count over 100 positions, almost primarily through attrition and retirement. Although some position losses were due to the state's decision to eliminate RDA, most of the positions were a result of the city being in a different place in the early 2000s, a growth era with the Dos Vientos development finishing then. The city was staffed for a particular need that no longer existed based on being a maintenance community and being built out. Our focus the past several years has been on our people strategy, examining each position as it becomes vacant, and determining if that need still exists in the organization, or if the position would be better utilized to serve a different need, not just looking at today, but looking at the future five years from now, 10 years from now. An example of this in this proposed budget is the conversion of a vacant budgeted analyst position into a neighborhood and social services liaison position, tasked with working with nonprofits and the faith-based community to better serve the homeless population, to better and more efficiently provide them with the services that they need. There were only a few major changes to the operating budget since the study session in May. Previously, 300,000 was included in the general fund in fiscal year 2020-21 to meet Fairbox requirements in the transportation fund. That support was removed out of the general fund and into the air quality impact fee fund. As I mentioned at the May study session, staff was taking a close look at water revenue assumptions in conjunction with financial plans, so the water revenue proposed budget has since been updated. Finally, the transportation fund has been adjusted based on the MV transportation contract that was approved by City Council at its last meeting. Since the general fund is the largest fund, I wanted to spend a few minutes going over the highlights. The proposed general fund budgets for the next two years are structurally balanced, as evidenced from the operating surplus projected. There's no transfer to streets for the streets program maintenance, as the streets program for the upcoming budget will be funded by gas taxes, SB 1 revenue, and TDA funds. Looking at the general fund budget by revenue type, you can see the primary general fund revenue is sales tax, and with property tax coming in next. And the breakout is very similar in the second year of fiscal year 2021. Traditionally, the city has been conservative in its budget projections. With a potential economic recession in the next two years, this proposed budget is no different. Sales tax is projected to decline slightly in the first year, with only a slight increase in the second year. We're already starting to see a decline in our autos, which is the city's largest sales tax revenue generator, primarily in the high-end auto dealers. We're also continuing to feel the effect of the explosion of online sales and movement away from traditional brick-and-mortar stores, which negatively impacts the share of the sales tax revenue that we receive. Licenses and permits are also projected to decline with a flat budget in the second year, in part due to increasing construction costs. Transient occupancy tax is projected to be flat, and other is projected to decline from its actual first revenue that is traditionally hard to budget based on being more one-time type revenues, which we don't want to rely on. Proposed fiscal year 2019-20 general fund appropriations total 87.2 million, the bulk of which are for salaries and benefits and police costs. Fiscal year 2020-21 is a very slight increase overall from fiscal year 2019-20, with CIP projects accounting for almost a $3 million decrease, offset by an increase in salaries and benefits, police and maintenance, and operations. The majority of the increase in salaries and benefits is twofold. First, we budget for 100% staffing all year, of which we generally have around 15 to 20 vacancies at any one time. Second, fiscal year 2019-20 budget is the first year that we are paying for the CalPERS Fresh Start Program, where the amortization of unfunded liabilities was reduced from 30 years to 15 years, saving an estimated $30 million to taxpayers. Much like a 15-year mortgage, this increases annual payments in the short term, but long term has a significant cost savings. Transfers out is proposed to decrease based on no transfer to fund the city's pavement program, as the next two years are fully funded with gas tax SB 1 and TDA funds. Switching gears to highlight the CIP budget for the next two fiscal years. The proposed CIP budget is 94.5 million across all categories, with the largest category of water at 28.9 million, the majority of which is the Los Robles Groundwater Project. The streets category is 23.4 million, and the majority of which is pavement maintenance. The total budget by fiscal year is similar, with the one-time investment from the general fund last year, the city was actually able to reduce the deferred maintenance from 18.6 million to 17.3 million. The budget includes major projects, such as the CAP Campus Master Plan Project, streetlight acquisition, reservoir and improvements. This provides a listing of various projects that were deleted, moved to the outer three years of the CIP plan, or added to the budget since the study session in April. The CIP budget continued to be refined over the past couple months, with staff looking at such things as workload balance and making decisions on moving projects. The project addition was due to a new requirement by Caltrans of having a local roadway safety plan in order to apply for HSIP funding beginning in 2022. Also included for adoption tonight are the various financial policies. These are included as part of the budget. The policies follow national best policies for budget development, fund balance, reservation, generally accepted accounting and audit principles, prudent investment of city funds, and debt management. They're crucial to fiscal sustainability and long-term financial management. In summary, the budget presented before you tonight for adoption represents a structurally balanced budget. The city has made significant investments over the past several years, and is in strong financial position. Staff doesn't anticipate a potential recession during the upcoming two years, unless we have conservative revenue projections. Based on this, we do anticipate that overall expenditure growth will outpace revenue growth, and we do have aging infrastructure that we are maintaining. We do anticipate various challenges in the future, and we will be updating our 10-year financial strategic plan to proactively begin to address those. But overall, because of the long history of sound, forward-thinking, prudent financial management, the city continues to be financially sound. Also, I would be remiss if I did not take the opportunity to thank all the staff that were part of the budget team, and involved in the development of both the operating and CIP budgets. Although the Finance Department oversees the budget process, we couldn't do it without assistance from every single department. In addition, listed are the finance staff that participated in the budget development. Brent Sakaida, the city's Budget Officer, played a key role in putting everything together, working countless hours over the past nine months, and Alisa Magania, James Russellfield, and David Brown all stepped up with three vacancies in the Accounting Division Budget Team, doing more than they would have normally been asked to do. Everyone listed has been involved to some degree on the development of the budget, and this process could not be successful without them. So tonight's recommendations are to adopt a resolution approving the proposed operating and CIP budget for fiscal year 2019-20 and fiscal year 2020-21, to adopt the financial and budget policies, and to authorize the city manager to carryover funds from fiscal year 2018-19 to fiscal year 2019-20, and from fiscal year 2019-20 to fiscal year 2020-21 for CIP projects, grants, and miscellaneous projects. And with that, staff is available to answer any questions.
Before we go to that, Ms. Boscarino, would you like to introduce the newest member of your Finance Department?
Sure. So, starting last week was Carrie Mattson, she's in the audience over there. She is the city's new Deputy Finance Director, so taking over for me in my old role, and she comes to us from the city of Burbank, where she worked 18 years, most of which was their Deputy Fiscal Services Director.
Welcome.
Very happy to have her.
Councilmember Builda Lepenya, would you like to start us off with some questions?
Actually, I don't have any questions, Mayor McCoy. I just have praise for our Finance Department, which again, has proven year after year how to run a city in a fiscally prudent manner, and I really, really appreciate all the work that you have done. And I also, again, wanted to recognize Brent Sakaida, because he was actually the product of a Citizens Roundtable, no, Budget Task Force Roundtable Recommendation. And, you know what, it's been working out really, really well, so I'm glad that you're still here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Now we'll go to Councilmember Adam, up, Mayor Protem. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I too wanted to thank Jamie and her staff, and Brent, I know it's a big job, and thank all the department folks as well. Big job. I mean, we're looking at a close to $440 million budget over the next two years, and, you know, what does that mean to our residents? It means that we continue the services that they expect, and it means no cuts in services, it means no closure of any facilities, we're not laying off any staff, we're not increasing sales tax. We are a strong city. Police, fire, library, our theaters, the golf courses, everything we're into is going to continue as it is, and in fact, we're spending more on some of the public safety that we're always stressing. And when I look at what we've done over the last couple of years, whether it's the Westlake Boulevard sidewalk project, saving taxpayers $30 million on our pension fund, putting aside a rainy day fund for pensions to keep us stable, it's just amazing to me. The biggest street paving project the city's ever done, 50 miles of street paving. And when I look at some of the stuff that we have on the horizon, whether it's the water project on Los Robles Golf Course, or, gosh, I mean, the list goes on and on, the Boulevard Streetscape Plan, what we're going to try to do with our downtown, it's really amazing, and I'm thankful that the city is as strong as it is, I'm proud to be a resident of it, and we do face some challenges, you know, we were moving from a growth city to a maintenance city, and we, like all cities, there's going to be some higher costs and maybe some revenue challenges, but we've been able to meet those challenges, and I know we'll continue to do that, so, great job, and happy we are where we are tonight.
Here, here. All right, well, do we have a motion? Councilmember Builda Lepenya, would you like the honors?
I would like the honors very much, thank you, Mayor McCoy. I move to approve a staff recommendation, which is the resolution of the annual operating and capital improvement program budget for fiscal years 2019, 2020, and 21, and also adopting financial policies.
Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote, please?
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much, everybody. That takes us to item 8B, another public hearing, annual collection of delinquent wastewater service charges, property tax roll, and to do that will be Sherri Johnson, Support Services Supervisor, and Jamie, you're going to be staying up there as well, so take it over, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. First, for the record, we'll open the hearing.
I'll get that down one of these days.
There are no speakers for this item.
I speak loudly.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor McCoy and Councilmembers. The report before you outlines the city's routine practice to ensure payment of delinquent wastewater service charges on active accounts by attaching a special assessment to the property owner's property tax bill. During the year, wastewater account holders are notified about their delinquent balance via billing reminder notices. Annually, letters are sent at the beginning of April notifying them of the city's intent to place a lien on the property if the delinquent amount remains unpaid. Leans are placed on the parcel for the amounts that are 120 days past due in April of each year, and subsequent letters are sent to inform the property owners that the city intends to attach the past due amount to the property tax rolls. To put this in context, when finance started the process in early April of this year, we identified 563 wastewater accounts with delinquent amounts totaling $113,060. During the subsequent weeks, some customers responded to the notices and paid. When leans were placed later in April, 317 leans were placed totaling $76,048. Customers continued to pay, bringing the amount subject to attachment to date to 186 accounts totaling $51,422. This is a very small number of accounts to be attached compared to the 38,000 total connections. It's less than one-half of 1%. Today, the delinquent amount is less than $52,000, and we can anticipate that by the time the final report is due to the County Tax Collector's Office, the amount that will be attached to the property tax rolls will be less than $50,000. Staff recommends that council adopt the resolution and approve the lists of names, parcel numbers, and amounts that will be submitted to the County Tax Collector for inclusion on the property tax bills. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We have Councilmember Builda Lepenya, would you like to?
I wanted to make the motion to move approval of staff recommendation.
Councilmember Engler, did you want to speak before?
I just had just a question, more in terms of the folks who are delinquent. What efforts are made to find out the reason for delinquency, and any exceptions made?
So, we don't proactively go out to the residents and find out why they were delinquent, that's not part of our process. We give them plenty of notification to get the bill paid before it gets attached to the property tax as a lien, but we don't proactively go out and find out why they're delinquent on their wastewater bills.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Builda Lepenya wanted to make a motion, so take it over.
All right, we state the motion, move staff approval for this item.
Madam Clerk, please prepare the vote.
Will do, and for the record, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
The motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is Sherri Johnson's first presentation in her new role as Revenue Operations Manager. She's held a number of posts within the organization, but is just recently moved back from the MSC, where she's done some great work, and taken over Melissa Hurtado's position after she moved into the City Manager's Office, so you'll be seeing a lot more of Sherri, and we're really lucky to have her in the role.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, third time's a charm, so we're going to do the third public hearing, item 8C, Landscape Lighting Assessment District 79-2 Annual Levy. Jay Spurgeon, Public Works Director, will be doing this. Madam Clerk, will you please announce the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, Agenda Item 8C regarding the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Number 79-2 Annual Levy. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. At this time, there are no requests.
Thank you. And also joining Jay is Jim Taylor, Senior Civil Engineer. Good evening, fellas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And also in our audience...
And also in our audience are two of our consultants from Web Financial, Nadia Benali and Charmaine McCarville, they're over there. Thank you, ladies, for coming up for this, to provide any support if there's questions. So our Landscape Lighting District funds an important quality of life, maintenance and operation, operational component of our budget, that is, maintenance of landscaping and street trees throughout the city, as well as our streetlights and traffic signals. And this is our annual public hearing to set assessments for the coming fiscal year. Now, I say this is important because between the lighting and landscaping, the budget, with everything in it, is over $10 million. And these districts generate, between assessments and ad valorem revenues, $7.5 million. So it's a significant revenue source for the city, for that ongoing, for those ongoing programs. You can see here that there are about 43% of parcels in the city that are assessed for landscaping and about 82% for lighting. The districts include a voter-approved inflationary adjustment factor, so that typically, year to year, all things being equal, we increase assessments at that level, and in this case, it's about 3.15% as an inflationary adjustment. And then this table shows kind of the range of increases for the landscaping. You can see between about $1.34 and $14 per year per residential property, average being about just under $10. So that's the increase, and you can see kind of the average assessments there. Again, these are annual per residential property assessments, and these come on the property tax bill, along with the wastewater bills if they're delinquent. And then for lighting, it's just over, it's almost $16 a year now. And that's the report. I could certainly answer any questions. We can go, we have other backup slides if need be for council members that might have questions, but again, this is the open, this is the public hearing, so that gets closed, and then we have some resolutions for you to adopt for the coming year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Council has no questions. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Angler, you got in before Councilmember Builda Lepenya.
It's always a competition. Yes, I do move that we go with the resolution approving the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District and Annual Levy assessments and adopt.
Well done. Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you for your time, fellas. That brings us to Item 13, City Manager Follow-Up Items.
Thanks so much, Mayor McCoy. Our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be Tuesday, the 25th of June, two weeks from tonight. Currently have two primary items on, our annual report from the Youth Commission and the award of our CEEF grants. And that will be on Tuesday, the 25th of June. We will only have one more meeting prior to the council recess, and that will be on Tuesday, July the 9th. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Ms. Noonan, you want to speak at the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two closed session matters tonight, both of them pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. First one is existing litigation, City of Thousand Oaks versus Valencia Circle K Riding Stables, and the second one is existing litigation, Valencia Circle K Riding Stables versus City of Thousand Oaks. It is not likely I will have anything to report.
Thank you. Tonight, I just wanted to close by remembering the men and women who were not occupiers, they were liberators in the 75th anniversary of D-Day, and it was just such a pleasure to have Lynn Zerlin and Harry Norken out tonight to honor them, and God bless you all. Have a wonderful evening. See you at next meeting.